Called this meeting to order for York School District One. Is there a motion for executive session for legal update classified personnel?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed no. So move.
...
Call this meeting in order for general session of York School District One. So welcome everybody this evening. We now have invocation by Reverend Nick Setser, First Presbyterian of York. Mr. Grayson, could you provide invocation for us, please?
Up here's me.
Oh, he's coming in. Yes, sir.
Great. I have our gear together.
We greatly appreciate you being here.
Absolutely. Give me just a second. Thank you for having me. I'm the pastor, Nick Setser, at First Presbyterian Church of York. Grateful to be in this community, grateful to be here to invitate us and pray for us beginning of the meeting. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, who knows and loves far greater than we can imagine. We meet once again to discern the directions in which the schools in our community must journey. We ask that you send your abiding presence here to guide us and direct each word, thought, and deed. Help us to put our listening ears on to fully hear perspectives that differ from our own. You have blessed this community with diversity and race and creed and color. So now weave us into a community showing forth your power and tenderness. Bless us in our differences and bridge our courage to stand together. We call on you today to gather us in your love, remind us that this time is about the children of our community and how we can build a bright future for them through the education we provide and discernment and decisions here today. May we keep all of our children in mind as we go through our agenda. Those whose families are like ours and those whose families may differ. Those whose families believe like ours and those whose beliefs may differ. Remind us, oh God, that all our children and all of our families are part of your beloved kingdom. Bless our teachers, administrators, council members, and all school employees in their work for the betterment of our schools and ultimately our children. Be with us now as we gather in your name. May we feel your presence among us. Amen.
Thanks, Reverend. We now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Hinson Robbins from York Intermediate. If everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. By the record of flag, we have a quorum with all members present tonight. The media has been notified. Are any members of the media present? See no members of the media present. There were no signups to speak in the public session forum for tonight. Move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Motion to approve by Ms. Kelly. Does she have a second? Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. For monthly school spotlight this evening, we have York Intermediate School. Mr. Keith McSwain will be presenting. Mr. McSwain?
Good evening, board members. Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox would come to you from York Intermediate School. Brought with me two of our teachers, Mr. Laura Ida Henry teaches science and Ms. Tierney Norris teaches math. And going to talk to you tonight, our spotlight is going to be on student-centered learning. And I want to start out by saying, really thank our district instructional technology team. They put forth the work, they've put forth the training that has trickled down to some of our teacher leaders and also other teachers in our school. And I'm just thankful for them. That's the first thing I want to say. Been in the cohorts with the teachers and the learning there that they are doing is contagious. We've been to visit teachers at the middle school. We've also had a visit to a school in Clover, had some teachers go to a school in Fort Mill. So several of our teachers are really taking on this student-centered learning practice. And I brought with me two of our teachers. I'm going to let them speak to you briefly about something that they feel important about student-centered learning. And then we're going to move on to our video that we have as well. If I can work the clicker. Okay.
Hi. Thank you all for letting me be here today. One of the things that is big in my classroom is choice. And I thank the instructional technologists for this because they really supported us in this goal. So we use our technology like Canvas to create mastery paths. And what that allows students to do is to take an assessment and to really create their own personalized path. So if they're ready to move on, they get to move on. And if they're needing a little bit more, they do that. And we've also used Canva to create Choice Board. So for example, my students needed to learn about Soundwave, so they had a tic-tac-toe board. And they got to choose whether they watched a video to learn about it, read about it, or did other kind of research about it. And then they were able to post their discussion to show that they had met the goals set forth for them. And so for me as a teacher, what that really does is it puts the students in charge of their learning. It allows them to ask questions and to have access to me when they need me versus everyone trying to fight for my attention. The people who are ready to move on, move on. The people who need me now have my full attention. So that also leads into Ms. Norris where she can talk about small groups.
So in my math class this year, we have implemented what's called a game plan. And it's a, they have five slides, students, I do a whole group lesson on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they work through what's called a game plan. So M is normally math fluency. We do IXLs. And then A is attack your brain. It is some sort of puzzle maze, something that they can do. T is teacher time. So that is actually where I get to go around and I pull small groups. So I meet with every student every week. And that is what I did the whole group lesson on, on Monday and Tuesday. So the other slides are what we did the previous week. So it's more independent practice. So that way I can fully focus on the group that's in front of me. H is hands-on. It's some sort of task cards, some sort of manipulative they can get in their hands and move around. S is seat work. So I either do their IXL skills plan, which is based off their map score, and that helps increase their map score. Or we do some sort of quizzes, some live games, something that gets them in their seat and gets them excited about learning. Again, what they like about this game plans, again, but kind of going off of what Ms. Ida Henry said about choice. I don't tell them where they have to start. The only thing they can't do is obviously teacher time with me. But it has allowed me to see every student every week and check in and be able to individually meet them. And then that way too, they can move on. So like, it's not like they have to wait on M, A. They can complete, I have some students done with their game plans by Thursday. And then Friday is what they really enjoy. It's called Free Choice Friday. There's lots of different choices for them, math games, they can do booklets, that kind of stuff. And they get excited for that. And then that also allows me, again, that individual time to work with those students who need it. So you will be able to see both of those in the video, along with some other teachers from our school that are doing small groups and doing more of that student-centered learning.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. This goes right with our strategic change agenda goal too, which is creating quality opportunities for ongoing learning for students and staff, promotes innovation and flexibility. Our goal is to give students good quality work. That's what we want students to do is to be able to provide our students with good quality work. Okay? Hope I didn't hit the button. We're going to watch.
My name is Keith McSwain. I'm principal at York Intermediate School. One of our strategic goals for our district is to create a challenging and supportive curriculum for all students. Several of our teachers have worked with other teachers in our school. We've had after-school professional developments where they've had opportunities to share with one another a lot of these student-centered practices that are going on in our school.
I'm Delora Addigian and I teach sixth grade science. When students have the options and the choices, they kind of have the put in control of their learning. So I see more engagement because even if there's a topic that I want them to explore, they have a choice in the how they learn that. So they may want to watch a video and hit hustle or maybe they want to read the article. Or some of them do like doing the pair decks that is both of them I create because they can go through it on their own pace, get some practice, and then it gives them a guide for when they're with me asking questions about things they understood.
With student-centered learning, as I've walked in classrooms daily and watched the instruction, one of the big things this year our teachers are doing are called game plans. With game plans, they run weekly based on whatever the standards and objectives are for that teacher. And students complete the work. And then it allows the teachers a time to sit down with students in small groups or even conference with an individual student.
I use what's called a game plan. Students are given, I do whole group instruction on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then on Wednesday, they are given a game plan. With the game plan, I don't tell them what slide they have to start on. So if they want to start on M, they can start on M. If they want to start on the H, they really enjoy that. They get to kind of pick what order they do them in. It gives them some more independence, which I think is very important.
It feels like you have more control of what you're doing versus just sitting there and having to take in what somebody is just saying there and saying to you. You can actually get to feel what you're learning.
So instead of just sitting and note-taking or sitting, watching a video and taking notes on that video or answering questions on paper about that video, you can like pick and choose like what video you want to watch or like what order you want to do things. And you can like, you know, have different answers than anyone else.
A lot of times I'll go in the classroom and students will be very busy. They'll be working. Teachers will be working with students. They have a small group pull to the side or they'd be conference with the student. And you just really, work now is on the student. Our teachers, they, you know, they're using students that are learning. They've enjoyed this. They've enjoyed this of letting these students kind of be responsible, so to speak, with their learning and their activities. And they are there and act somewhat as a facilitator some of the times with students that are learning. And that students are responsible and are empowering themselves to learn the standards that are given to them. And teachers are there to help and facilitate this learning process.
So wrap it up. If we have any questions in regards to the student-centered learning practice that we're doing, it's somewhat different. I had to get used to it as a principal. It's my seventeenth year as principal. And I remember first starting out as principal and if I didn't sit the teacher up and teaching and talking, then I didn't think we was getting anything done. And I tell you, it's all the roles is reversed to where instead of the teacher being wore out at the end of the day, the students need to be worn out at the end of the day from having work and doing things. And so much of this can be on their level too. We have students at all different levels and teachers can tailor the assignments, the activities that are just right for the individual. And with all of our data that we have, we have resources that we can put in those Chromebooks and do those things. So we glad to come to you and talk to you a little bit about what we're doing at the intermediate school. We still got a long ways to go. Still got a long ways to go to get everybody on board. But I do have a good group, good cohort of teachers that have really, like I said, embraced this and are working hard at it and sharing with others. And we're thankful. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain. Anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. McSwain?
I have a comment. I was able to go over to the intermediate school, I think in the fall. They were having a celebration for the end of the cohort the technology specialists had done in class. And I got to hear some of the conversation through the teachers and seeing what they had come up with for their students. And it was very powerful. And I really think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. So Intermediate School was one of the schools that invited me for Board Member Appreciation Month. And I greatly appreciated that. I enjoyed being there. It was good seeing the students helping each other too. I think that's one of the takeaways I had was the students helping each other. Obviously the teachers there and assisting, but you know, and they also looked at us and were glad to see, they were glad to see us there, if that makes sense. And then walking around and the teachers, you know, trying to get us involved just walking around. I thought that was presented very well by your staff. So greatly appreciated and appreciate the invite. Just thank you for what you do.
Thank you all. And just throw out an infomercial, this Friday we have career day at Intermediate School. We have over seventy, eighty different careers that are coming and it's an all-day event. It's a really big deal that we do. And like I said, it'll be an all-day event. And so we're looking forward to that as well. But thank you.
We'd love to see you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Move on to student-staff recognitions. Ms. Spangler and be assisted by Beth Faulk.
Good to see so many parents and students here tonight. Like to ask Dr. John Tharp, who's the principal at York Conference of High School, and Mr. Phil Suggs, who's the coordinator, to come forward, please. Congratulations to the following students who auditioned individually and were selected for the All-State Chorus. These students were evaluated on Pergalese's Hallelujah in the categories of rhythm, timing, pitch, intonation, diction, tone quality, and musicality. In addition, students had to sight-read a musical excerpt that they had never seen. Students, I'm going to call your name and ask all of you to come forward and stay forward because we want a group picture, okay? Zach Allman. Shelby Wade. Harmony Strickland. Emily Theobar. Valerie Bowden. Grayson Craig. Bree Hale. Allison McClure. J.J. Mead. Aleah Perkins. Will Ramsey. Bentley Randall. Audrey Buran. Audrey Bronson. Kaylee Fowler. Gabby Henderson. Cameron Neal. Silas Schumacher. Kylie Hudgens. And Ian Roder. Let's give these students a round of applause.
So while Tim is arranging everybody, I will share with y'all a fun fact that Phil shared with me the other day. We had twenty-three students who auditioned for On the Choir and twenty of the twenty-three made it. That is a pretty phenomenal stat if you consider we haven't been able to do that live and in person for several years. Congratulations, Mr. Suggs, and your students.
Next we have some staff recognitions. I'm going to ask Ms. Cassidy Ballerino, who's the principal at York Middle School, to come forward. She's not here, so, okay. And we'd like to recognize Mr. Dylan Sims. Thank you. Alyssa Cox, Director of Secondary Ed, is coming forward. Congratulations to York Middle School Band Director, Mr. Dylan Sims, who was named to the 2023 to the 2023 Yamaha Music Forty Under Forty Excellence in Music Education List. Yamaha launched the Forty Under Forty Music Education Advocacy Program in 2021 to celebrate and recognize outstanding music educators who are making a difference by growing and strengthening their music programs. What an exciting accomplishment. Congratulations. Next, we'll call forward Ms. Amy Hagner, who's Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and Ms. Sherry Hernandez, who is the Accounting Manager. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Nikki Leslie for earning her four-year bachelor's degree in Business Management from Southern New Hampton University. I don't believe she's here, but we'll give her a round of applause. We'd like to call forward Jane Wallace, who's principal at Hunter Street Elementary. Congratulations to Dr. Loriann Hudson. Who received her EDD in Curriculum and Assessment from Southern Wesleyan University. Her dissertation was entitled "An Investigation of Montessori Education Efficacy Versus the Traditional General Education Classrooms for Improved Achievement." Woo! Made it. Congratulations, Dr. Hudson. I think you have a fan tonight.
Well, actually, that's really important because anyone who has ever completed that degree can tell you it takes a family of support to make it happen. So back later, Loriann, if you want to introduce your husband and your children, just tell them what.
Like to ask Ms. Rebecca Dover, who's principal at Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary. There she is. Must wonder to come forward. And joining her, Vicky McCorkle. Congratulations to Vicky McCorkle, music teacher, who was awarded a $2,000 grant from the Cindy Mackey Foundation. The grant will help support the school's Sites and Sounds of America project, as well as equip the new chorus with necessities such as music books, CDs, and an external hard drive, music folders, chorus T-shirts, a portable CD player, art supplies, supplies for the STEM club, and supplies for the written projects. Wow. Congratulations. Okay, and Ms. Cox is up front with us, our district superintendent. We'd like to call forward Ms. Amy Hagner, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, who just Thursday was named the 2023 Outstanding School Business Official by the South Carolina Association of School Business Officials. This award is presented annually by the South Carolina Association of School Business Officials. Award nominees must be an active member of the School Business Official State Organization, have at least three years' experience in education finance, and demonstrate exemplary service to their school district, their profession, their colleagues, and their communities. And Ms. Hagner certainly does that. Congratulations.
She had no idea she was getting it. We had a little sneak peek that she was going to receive it, so Dr. Dixon and I traveled down there to see her be presented. We had to hide in the closet for about forty-five minutes before they allowed us to come back. Were you surprised? Congratulations, Ari.
Congratulations to all our awards.
Now move into reports. Get a safety update from Mr. Kevin Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Thank you. It's like showing tail.
Good evening, Superintendent Cox, Chairman Childers, and Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to bring to you a safety and security update tonight. I would ask you, take a moment to think, what does it mean to feel safe? I'll give you just a moment to think about that. What does it mean to you to feel safe? We hear so much these days about active violence, social media threats, bullying, illegal use of drugs, and mental health problems in our society. Unfortunately, these issues also have the potential to compromise our school's safety. I'm proud to be part of a school district whose superintendent and board of trustees acknowledge what feeling safe in York School District One means. It means these moments of teaching, learning, fellowship, competition, joy, and peace, all which are evident by these photographs of our students, must always remain the center of our school's safety programs. We should be reminded that students learn best and teachers teach best when everyone feels safe. It is our daily school safety policies, practices, and procedures, and just as importantly, the culture and climate of the school and school district that allows us to truly be safe. We are fortunate to have in York School District One a dedicated and qualified School Resource Officer assigned to each school. Six SROs are state-funded, while three are district-funded. Our SROs are intentional about providing a safe school environment each day. They do so not only by practicing the strategies and tactics of which they are well-trained, but also by building positive relationships with our students, staff, and parents. From directing school traffic to teaching safety classes and providing daily security, our School Resource Officers are truly an invaluable resource. We are intentional about meeting with our School Resource Officers to assess, plan, and implement school safety initiatives. These initiatives are to keep students and staff as safe as possible by enhancing and utilizing the School Resource Officer's talents and knowledge for safety and security in the schools and community. Our emergency preparedness meetings are held quarterly, and as you can see, weapon detection has been a topic in each of our meetings this year. Also new this year is the implementation of school safety teams. The school's safety teams are made up of selected school administrators, school resource officers, teachers, and staff. Our school's safety teams have focused on assessing and improving safety protocols within their facility, including the conduction of our emergency drills. This semester, we have implemented unannounced lockdown drills. This list shows the schools that have completed the unannounced lockdown drill. The remaining schools have a planned date in the near future, and the purpose of our unannounced drill is to assess how staff and students respond when they do not know the date or time of the drill. Schools have been encouraged to practice the unannounced drill during times of transition, and so far, these drills have revealed areas of strengths and improvements. Strengths include our quick response to the drill and effectively demonstrating the protocol of locks, lights, and out-of-sight. Areas of noted improvement have included the inability to hear lockdown announcements in some high-noise areas. Other areas of noted improvement have included teachers attempting to bring students back inside the building when it's under lockdown, and lastly, some minor failing mechanics on classroom doors. Since 2020, our School Resource Officers, in conjunction and coordination with administration, have completed a school vulnerability and threat assessment. We use the PAST Assessment, which is recommended by NASRO. Listed are the components of the PAST Assessment, which we followed since 2020. In 2020, these were the areas of needed improvement identified by the PAST Assessment. An SRO dedicated to each school, an update and improved safety signage was two of the main takeaways that we took out of that 2020 PAST Assessment. And likewise, here's a list of accomplishments from the 2020 PAST Assessment. As I've already mentioned, a School Resource Officer has since been dedicated to each school. We were able to produce a clear bag policy and implement signage for our athletic events, badge access entry to each of all of our facilities, and at that time, we were able to purchase one weapon detector. In 2022, a second PAST Assessment was conducted, and listed here are some of the areas of needed improvement. Just to mention a few of the big ones there, the exterior numbering on buildings, and a simple increase in teaching and conversation of our SRP and SRM, because as you know, we were not focused on that as much as we should have been for some period of time with COVID. And then lastly, weapon detection. This slide shows the 2022 PAST Assessment accomplishments. We've been able to number our exterior buildings. We were able to restate all of our safety drills, and we have, in fact, increased our teaching and just general conversation around our SRP and SRM. A third PAST Assessment was conducted in February of 2023, and listed here are areas of needed improvement, which we are currently analyzing and planning implementation for the remainder of this year and upcoming school year. And I'll highlight the top one there, which is weapon detection. Weapon detection as our latest security initiative, as so, we have purchased seven of open-gate weapon detectors like the ones that you see, or the one you see in front of you. These detectors were purchased through the COPS grant, and currently, we have eight total mobile weapon detectors, five detectors which will be housed at York Comprehensive High School, and three which will be housed at York Middle. Because of the mobility and the lightweight of these detectors, they can be used at other schools and venues in the district as needed. All SROs, secondary athletic directors, secondary school administrators, Mr. Carper, and myself, received weapon detection training on March eighth and ninth. I also must take a moment to thank Ms. Lisa Spangler for all her hard work and help in us securing the funding for these weapon detectors. Thank you, Ms. Lisa. So when looking at our plan, as we know, we have a weapon detection policy. The policy states that metal detectors may be used at such places as entrances to buildings, classrooms, auditoriums, and gymnasiums, or as individuals enter and exit district vehicles or school buses. They may also be used at extracurricular events hosted by the district, including athletics. After completing thorough testing and training and effectively communicating with all of our stakeholders, our goal is to implement weapon detection at our secondary schools. With the anticipated success of weapon detection at the secondary level, we hope to be able to purchase additional detectors for elementary schools in the future. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on our safety and security initiatives, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Any questions or comments?
How far apart do these have to be?
So the recommended is thirty-six inches. It can go up to forty-two and still be effective. The closer you put them, so if you get into a twenty-eight, thirty range, it's more sensitive.
How are y'all currently using these? Where are you placing them?
So currently, we're not using them at all. We just received them and just received turning on March eighth and ninth. We have had the one that I mentioned in the presentation that we purchased in 2022. It's a larger, more doorframe-type detector, and we've used that primarily in our shim at the high school.
What's the cost on these?
They run about fifteen...
Just roughly.
Fifteen thousand? They are state-of-the-art. If you go to a Clemson game, or to Panther Stadium, or to any NFL stadium, they are all using these systems. They are designed to move masses of people in a short period of time, based upon the settings that we're running.
So I think you said you have five at the high school now? Is that right?
We have five that would be placed at the high school.
Are y'all going to put them in all the entrances, or what's the plan? Or do you have a plan?
We are still in the planning process for that, in the stages of that.
Then would you... Never mind. That's, we're down the right question.
Okay. So I noticed she has cell phone, watch, she's got some other stuff on her, I guess. It didn't go off, but these devices, if you know anything about weapon detection, they are designed and set based upon federal standards, federal metal mass standards. And so she now has a mask on her that would represent a weapon.
So that wouldn't pick up a knife, per se? That would pick up?
At this setting, that...
Firearms?
At this setting, correct. But not to get too deep into our security, we could say.
Violent.
There's three different levels. You have your shoulder level, waist level, and ankle level.
They sell them off batteries. They weigh twenty-five pounds apiece, and they're very mobile, even with the batteries, and the batteries will last, a new battery charge will be fourteen hours.
Very lightweight.
Any other questions or comments?
I would have much rather had these than the ones I walked through for thirty-two years. I walked through a metal detector for thirty-two years, and it could pick up a hairpin. So you are headed in the right direction.
Thank you both.
Thank y'all. Okay, what you got?
Next up, we have Office of Human Resources, Mr. Mark Sanders. Just a reminder that discussion for certified resignation and release, certified resignations, certified retirements, and certified recommendations. We will need to go into executive session for personnel matters if there's any discussion. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox, members of the board, greetings from the Office of Human Resources. Tonight, I have four items for your consideration. We will begin with certified, number one, certified resignations, yes, certified resignations for 2023.
Do we have a motion?
As to move for the acceptance of certified resignations for 2023 as presented.
Have a motion of Ms. Johnson as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Anderson? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. So moved.
Thank you. The second item we have tonight are our certified retirements. The second item we have tonight are our certified retirements for the end of the school year 2223.
Do I have a motion?
I submit for the recommendation of the certified retirement with congratulations for end of year 2223.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson as recommended with congratulations for 2223. Do we have a second? Have a second by Mr. Rebels. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So moved.
Our third item are our certified recommendations, current year 2223.
Do I have a motion?
I submit for the certified recommendations to be accepted as presented.
Have a motion.
For year 2324.
2223. Have a motion by Ms. Johnson as recommended for 2223. Do I have a second? Have a second by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? Send out all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So moved.
And our final item, number four, certified recommendations for 2324.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Ms. Kelly to approve as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Anderson. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Now, we hear from Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Hagner.
Good evening. The first item is policy GCLE on a cumbered time, and I ask for your approval for first reading.
Do we have a motion?
We'd accept the first reading policy, GCLE, for first reading.
Motion by Mr. Rebels. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So moved.
Next item is just a budget update. We haven't had a whole lot happen from our work session. Do you want you all to know that the House is debating the budget this week. Their goal is to finish it and pass that off to the Senate by the end of the week, because the House is on furlough next week. We do anticipate at our State Department meeting last week, we did hear from the finance officer with the State Department. She anticipates getting the house Ways and Means projections out to districts. We hope to get it at the end of this week. If not, it'll be the end of sometime next week. And so I'll share that with you all in a Friday file, and obviously, we'll cover it again at our April work session. Other than that, everything still kind of remains the same. As you know, in the House version of the budget, they did increase each cell of the minimum teacher salary schedule by 2,500. That would raise the state's starting salary from 40,000 to 42,500. The methodology of districts receiving that 2,500 will be the same as last year. So in other words, at this point in time, the state's not truly funding $2,500 for every teacher. So right now, that methodology and allocation is based on last year as well. Of course, the teacher supply increased to $350. We did hear for the employer portion of retirement increase that that's going to go up 3.7%. We have not heard anything officially on the cost of retirement at this point. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any information, only anyone having questions for Ms. Hagner? Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Now, here from Coordinator of Special Projects, Ms. Lisa Spangler.
Good evening again. Board members, you have been presented with information regarding the district's participation in Jules settlement offer, and we bring the recommendation to the board for consideration of approval of the settlement.
Thank you, Ms. Spangler. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Ms. Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rebels. Any discussion on the matter? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spangler. And I guess that gets us to Officer Superintendent.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cox?
Mr. Childers, board members, first item that I have for you this evening is an action item. It is my list of administrative recommendations for you as of tonight, March 14, 2023.
For the administrative recommendations for 2023, 24, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented by Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rebels. Any discussion? Reminder, we will need to go into executive session if so. No discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And the last item that I have for you this evening is a list of our upcoming dates. Reminder that Mr. McSwain has mentioned Career Day. That is on your upcoming list for Friday. It's a nice event, if you have an opportunity to attend. March 21, High School and Floyd D are planning their 60-plus Breakfast Club. We're calling it 60-plus because they used as a database all those athletic pass holders, people that are eligible for receiving the athletic pass, the 60-plus athletic pass that we did. And then they included to that, you all as board members, where we're not implying that you were 60-plus, we just include you. They also included county council, city council.
Well, I am.
County council, city council, and our local delegation. They're planning for a morning of first comments, breakfast by culinary, and then dividing into groups and tour the different programs and academic classes within the school. If your schedule allows, I'm sure they'd love to have you attend that. A reminder that on the 27th, we have our Legacy Training, Build Your Own Legacy Training that we will do. It will be over at Liberty Church. They're hosting it for us. Mike Patrick will be our speaker, and executive staff and principals, and some assistant principals will be joining us. March 31 is a bad-weather day, and right around the corner, we're all counting Days Two as spring break, beginning April 3 through 10. That's all I have for you this evening, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Cox?
I would like to say, if I could, I took an opportunity. The principals gave me the names of teacher leaders within their building, and I had an opportunity to meet with those folks last Friday. We called it the Connected Cafe. We had a time of fellowship at Garden Cafe, and then a time of dialogue around how we can recruit and retain teachers. Some really creative thinking from our teacher leaders. Thankful for that opportunity, principals. Thank you for the names. Looking forward to having that conversation with y'all. Got a very fired-up group. They were wonderful to have the time with, so appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Is there a need for executive session?
Can I make a comment before you go there?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Childers, I saw that you and Ms. Kelly got to do a shout-out to your schools for board appreciation, ma. I will not sit here and let Ms. Sanford, no, Ms. Hughes, go unrecognized. I had the opportunity of visiting my old high school. Most of you know that. It was a high school when I went there, Ms. Sanford, and I was so amazed at the changes because I've only been to the gym and the auditorium in the past. But I got to see a lot of things, as in the showcase tonight. I saw that in action in the elementary school a few weeks ago. Then I journeyed to Jefferson, one of my home schools, where I went to elementary school at Jefferson. And I got to attend Black History at Jefferson, and the children there were outstanding as well. So I will not sit here and let them recognize the school and not give you recognition as well. I was so appreciative. I've been invited back Friday to your school at Jefferson for Career Day, so I can't go to yours, Ms. McSwain, because they invited me first. So I wanted you to know that. Also, I stopped in to speak with Ms. Haggler, wanted to congratulate her. I've been in this district 19 years, and you're the first to get that award, and I'm very proud. As I told you tonight, I could put you up among the best and feel comfortable with what I'm doing. And believe me, I even looked at this formula tonight. So I don't want you. And I didn't even give a report, but I looked at that formula, which I don't think is too fair, because we got more students and less money. And you know I figured it out. But nevertheless, I wanted you guys to know the great work that you're doing as well, and I thank you. I had to say something.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I do have one more upcoming date that I will mention, Chairman Childers. It did not make it on y'all's list because we received the invitation late. But there is an NAACP State of Education address that will be happening Thursday night, this Thursday night, at New Hope, A and E Zion, and Dr. Latoya Dixon will be presenting.
Off 49, Highway 49. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Anybody else have anything? Any need for executive session? All right. I just want to thank everybody coming tonight. Greatly appreciate everybody's efforts. It's good to hear all this. Ms. Johnson alluded to it well. It's good to hear all this information. I think your school district one's got a good thing going, and appreciate everybody's efforts. Greatly appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no.